Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Genoa Township Board of Trustee meeting. This is a regular trustee meeting. The date is June 6, 2024, and the time is 6:30 PM. Pat, will you call the roll?
Mr. Antonet.
Here.
Ms. Goodman.
Here.
Ms. Vaughn.
Here. Also present, we have our fiscal officer, Pat Meyer, our Assistant Fiscal Officer and HR Director, Donna Batten, interim Director of Road, Building and Ground and Parks, Lauren Fitzpatrick, Police Chief, James McMillan, Fire Chief, Joe Ponzi, Fire Battalion Chief, Corey Weekly, Director of Zoning and Development, Joe Schaefer, Communications Director, Leslie Strater, and our Township Administrator, Paul Wise. This time, I'd like to ask Landon Falkerson to lead us in the pledge. If everybody could stand, if you're able.
Pledge leaders, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Landon. And Landon, if you want to stay there or come to the podding, either way, Landon is here. He has earned his Eagle Scout, and we just want to acknowledge him and his accomplishments and all of your hard work. I know it's years in the making, and you're very decorated.
Thank you. It's been about 11 years.
11 years. Very good. So can you tell people what you did for your Eagle Scout project?
My Eagle Scout project, I built an outdoor feed pantry box. We called it a blessings box, out in front of the Delman Pal Church of Christ, where my family worships. So it's kind of a take what you can, or take what you need, leave what you can, style. To kick off, they wanted to start a food pantry ministry program over there.
Awesome. We have a letter to congratulate you and acknowledge your accomplishment. So, and thank you for attending your meeting, and your parents. Want to introduce them?
Yes, this is my dad, John, and my mom, Ken Falkerson.
Very nice.
Thank you very much for having me.
Yes, and I know, I know you started 11 years ago. I'm sure you weren't, your projects and Boy Scouts, you didn't get there all by yourself.
Yes, no, there was a lot of support, a lot of, you know, pushing me, encouragement along the years, dragging me to meetings and whatnot. So yeah, yes.
I have a coffee mug that says, "I survived my kid's Eagle Scout project."
I bet so. I bet so. It's a lot of hours. So congratulations. I'll come give this to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thanks.
All right, now I'll turn it over to Pat for the fiscal officer report.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I'd ask approval of the trustee meeting minutes. April 4th, regular meeting. April 9th, special trustee meeting. And May 2nd, regular meeting.
I'll move to approve the following trustee meeting minutes. April 4th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. April 9th, special meeting minutes. May 2nd, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antonet, Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries.
Second, the April financials, month-end April financials would be for your review. Everything's cleared in the bank, you know, all reconciled. Currently, $27 million, $33,859.82. The balance is made up of our investments of $19 million, $370,214.29, and the primary account is $7 million, $663,645.53. And I'll have that for your signature. You would have received it as well. And that's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
Okay. Thanks, Pat. I'll open it up to public comment. If you'd like to speak, I'd just ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is John McHale, 5342 Teresa's Trail in Galena. I'm addressing you this evening as a member of the FIRE Levy Advisory Committee. We met for several hours over multiple evenings to discuss the need for additional funding for our fire department, and the best options to bring to voters in November. Chief Ponzi will share with you our recommendations in a few minutes, but I wanted you to know that we had a very strong consensus. Strong opinions, varied ideas, but at the end, a very strong consensus. At the end of our last meeting, we decided to take a vote just to see how far apart we were if we agreed or disagreed, much like they do at the start of a jury deliberation. We first voted on our first choice by secret ballot, so we didn't persuade anyone by who was voting one way or the other. And Option A, which Chief will present to you, received four out of six votes. We then decided that we should see what was our second choice of the options. And Option B received six out of six votes as our second choice option. We recommended to Chief that both options be presented to you this evening for your consideration. We all agreed that going to voters to ask for money is never easy and never without risk. That led to the strong support for Option A because it gives our fire department a continuous source of funding. The fire department is extremely well thought of in our community and is often the reason why people don't want to leave our township. And Molly and I are examples of that. If an operating levy would ever fail, we would risk losing valued, well-trained and experienced firefighter paramedics. It would take years to replicate. We believe that a failed levy would have a devastating effect on the department and on our community. Option A solves the funding crunch for 2025 by having just one levy vote this fall. Our fire department has earned the respect, appreciation, and support of a grateful community. We feel strongly that voters will overwhelmingly vote yes for Option A in November. We provided Option B clearly as our second choice for your consideration as an alternative solution. While it keeps the department solvent, it requires that voters also approve a renewal of the current operating levy in November 2025. We feel that having two levies a year apart poses an unnecessary risk. Chief Ponzi will share these options in more detail, but I felt that it was important that you hear our rationale. Option A, and to a lesser, slightly lesser extent, Option B, will let our current and future firefighters know that the Genoa Township Fire Department is not an experiment. You are here to stay. We need you. We value you. And in November, we will demonstrate that by voting yes to providing you with a sustained funding source. I also want to thank you trustees for your consideration and for allowing and promoting resident input into important decisions like this that affect us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seen none. I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to trustee comments. Anyone?
I don't have anything for tonight.
I just want to thank the members of the Parks Committee. As they did in the last couple of years, they put flags out at our cemeteries for veterans. And it's something that the group feels very strongly about. We appreciate the fact that they do that. Historically, it had been done by the Maintenance Department, but it's an opportunity to free up their time a little bit and do something that is, is very worthwhile. So, thank you to the Parks Committee.
Perfect. Thank you. And I agree. I have a couple of things. I mentioned last month that I went, was planning to go to the National Associations of Towns and Townships meeting in Washington DC on May 7th and 8th. There were nine states represented of the 22 that have towns and townships. I was able to meet with Troy Balderson's office, Jim Jordan's office, JD Vance's office, and Sherrod Brown's office. Those are all of the representatives and the senators that represent us. So, some things that we pushed back on were broadband for especially the very rural areas. It doesn't affect, you know, township as much as it does in some places of Ohio, but with today's jobs and schools, it's important that people have access to high-speed internet. Also, we pushed back on money for roads because, as you know, we're looking to put on a roads levy here in the township, especially with they all, with just the cost of everything, and then with construction with intel, it is impacting everybody's side roads. And we were pushing back on, there's a push to increase the weight limit for trucks, and we don't want to see that. Also, the Delaware County Township Association held a legislative meeting on May 23rd, where there were Representative Lear and Lorenz and Senator Brenner. And it was, it was just township trustees in Delaware County who attended, who were invited. And that was very informative. There was a lot of discussion on zoning, which I mentioned last month as well with the Senate Subcommittee report. Some takeaways are Representative Lear supports responsible property taxes, especially after the recent reassessment. She'd like to look into that and see what we can do so it can be manageable by homeowners and there isn't such a fluctuation. Lorenz was kind of along the same lines with tax relief for the elderly. And he would like to see as far as zoning, a uniform zoning application process. And it was mentioned that really it's municipalities, it aren't even the same. Townships are not the same, they don't have the same requirements when it comes to zoning. So how can we streamline that process so it's more uniform? He'd like to see a checklist for zoning applications and allow 10 days to review them. He said that the referendum threshold, I know there was talk that it might go up to 35%, sounds like it won't. During the last year's budget bill, the referendum threshold went from 8% of the voters in the gubernatorial race for signatures to file a petition. It has increased to 15. That's where it's going to stay. Brenner said that he was happy to hear, I'm sorry, I'm reading my notes. There, he was saying that there was talk that the zoning was going to go, the ability to zone was going to be taken away from townships, and that will not happen. So I'm happy to hear that. I guess in certain areas of the state, there are issues getting zoning inspectors, which, or I'm sorry, building inspectors, which delays the building process. So he's trying to get help for builders for that. He's supportive of real people owning homes because right now, and it's not just in Ohio, it's everywhere, you have LLCs and people who don't live in America buying homes, and they're buying them for cash, and they're buying them over asking, and they're keep, they're eliminating the average person's ability to purchase a home. So they're trying to create legislation so that you prevent these outside entities from buying homes and let normal people, I shouldn't say that, that's not the word I'm looking for, but just, you know, your college graduates and your young youth who would like to purchase a home. They're allowing them to do that. He's, he's working on a squatter bill. It's Senate Bill 241 to make it easier to evict squatters, because right now, that is a concern. He would like zoning reform so that you don't have to go through the General Assembly. And he is supportive of helping townships update comprehensive plans. I know we're in the process of doing it, but I have people, zoning commission members and trustees from other townships asking me about our zoning resolution and our comprehensive plan. They, they steal our stuff. That's not uncommon. We steal other people's stuff. It's okay, but they don't have the resources or the money that we do to update their comprehensive plan. So they're looking at funding for townships to do that. He was saying that also that the referendum won't go away. There was talks that they would eliminate it, eliminate it, or increase the threshold. He is, wants to work on something where if you have divergences that aren't significant, that you can't, he wants to eliminate the residents' ability to referend those types of zoning approvals. I think that might be it. Yes, that is it. So I'm happy to hear that some of the items that were threatened are no longer threatened. And I, I can tell you that they, I heard, this was due to resident pushback, trustee pushback, and the Ohio Township Association's pushback. So I want the residents to know that if you've emailed your representatives, it's working. So it's kudos to them. That's all I have. And Paul, I will send it over to you.
Thank you. Just, a thought just occurred to me, this, that I've been here for 20 years, and I, I don't think we've ever had a state OTA board member in Delaware County in the last 20 years. So.
That's what I've heard, but nobody can confirm it.
Stepping up. No, I mean, I, I don't remember. I've been here, and I'm aware of who's on the board, but yeah, thank you for your commitment to join that board. First up, I'm going to have to defer the Employee Assistance Program to the person who did all the legwork on this, is Donna Batten, HR. So I'm going to turn off my mic and let her talk about the EAP.
Good evening, trustees. In the process of reviewing and updating the personnel policy for the last few months, it was brought to our attention that there were several mentions of an EAP throughout that policy. And we do not have an EAP. I had been informed that prior, everybody was instructed to utilize the health insurance if they had any type of issues, that that was our EAP. So that triggered me to contact Todd Bolinger, you've all helped him. He has come and spoke to you several times with regards to our insurance. And he explained to me, because of our self-funding health insurance plan, we do not have an EAP. So that triggered a conversation with him, and he had put me in contact with their wellness consultant. Her name is Angie Kennedy. And she had presented to us four companies that they would recommend for the township to look at getting an EAP. I have, I sent you guys just an overall comparison of the four companies. There was Comp Psych, Curaling, Empathia, and Telus. Comp Psych seems like it was a company for much, much, much larger organizations. They, you know, they were, they talked about hundreds and thousands of employees. And I didn't, I felt that maybe that was not the right path for us. We talked about Telus. Telus had been previously, or was previously just a small company. They had been acquired by someone else, and their wellness consultant did not recommend us using them. She had heard some bad things. So when we presented the items to you for this night's, for tonight's agenda, I had sent you over information for Curaling. That is the company that CBIZ, our third-party administrator, they use for their EAP. And then Empathia. And Empathia was the company that they were suggesting would be a good fit for us. So I will, I have scheduled a meeting to, to meet with both and speak with both companies to get more of the pros and cons. Because as you can see, the proposals that I've forwarded to you guys, one was 27 pages, and the other one was, what, five or six? So I need to get some more information. And I wanted to let you know, and any of the department heads, if you have any questions, concerns, that you would like me to address with both of these companies after you review the proposal, to email me those by June the 12th.
Thank you, Donna. Next up on my agenda, I just want to get the board updated on a work in progress that is occurring. Genoa Township was asked to attend a meeting along with Orange Township, Liberty Township, and Berkshire Township. The, the meeting was to discuss the recent tornado that went through Delaware County, and what we could do to help coordinate efforts better, and to have a better plan in place for what you would call, what police and fire call, more of an automatic mutual aid type of arrangement. After we made discussions, and they actually had the Prosecutor's Office prepare a draft resolution for that purpose. And then trustees were encouraging also that we look bigger picture on this. And so we've asked the Prosecutor's Office to think larger county-wide effort. And that's where we're at now. It's a work in progress, but we're looking at a And that's where we're at now. It's a work in progress, but we're looking at a bigger county-wide help in case of a natural disaster. So nothing right now is needed on this. I just wanted to let you know that there's discussions.
I have a comment on that.
Yes.
Through the Delaware County Township Association, trustee Garrett from Concord Township and I met with Melissa Shiffel and Mark Fowler in January about this topic. And they have been working on drafts for us, and Melissa Shiffel was supposed to speak next Thursday on this.
Good.
So, anyway. So I would like to see what she has to say. I think she's presenting. I don't think Mark is.
She's obviously the lead.
Yes.
Being the county prosecutor.
Right. Yes.
Very good. Next up, we were given an invoice this week from the Delaware County Office on Homeland Security and Emergency Management. It's for the 2024 Emergency Management Apportionments. And so I'm asked the board this evening to approve the fees for this for the year 2024.
I'll move to approve a purchase order to Delaware County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management in the amount of $13,796.71 for the fiscal year 2024 Emergency Management Apportionments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonett?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. I'm going to step over into the Maintenance and Buildings and Grounds Report right now. What we have is a continuation of what the board recommended last meeting was to prepare the resolution of necessity for the road replacement levy. And so I asked the board to approve that resolution this evening to get the ball rolling so that we can move ahead with the expiring levy this, this year.
Can we have a high-level
Yes.
Summary?
So the recommendation of the, of the, the Road Levy Committee was to, was that the current funding of the town, of the road levies wasn't enough to fit within a 30-year timeframe. So they're requesting that the board, they, they basically recommended finding another half a million dollars to make it a lower 25-year replacement, a levy in addition to a renewal. Unfortunately, through discussions with the board, it was recommended last month that we move ahead with a replacement of levy of 1.89 mils, which should be lower than the existing millage at this time. But with the tax reassessments to properties, the increase would be right around half a million dollars as recommended by the committee.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll move to approve a resolution of necessity to levy a replacement and decrease tax in excess of the 10-mil limitation for the purpose of roads and bridges, RC 5705.03, 5705.19G, 5705.191, 5705.192, and 5705.25 as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonett?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries.
So there is a freestanding resolution that we'll need, that Donna's passing around to me, that will need to be signed officially to send up to the county offices for their certification of the new, of the funds that this will generate. Thank you. Next up, the township has received a letter of resignation from Bob Matthews. Just to get you up to date, this letter is a resignation. Bob officially retired from public service over 20 years ago from the city of Delaware. The state of Ohio recognizes one retirement per person. And so this is more or less a resignation retirement through Genoa Township. Bob started in public service when he was a young teen at the city of Delaware on the golf course. He paid into opers when he was a young teen. And so he had close to 31 years in at a very young age. And what he told me was, and he's been told by state opers people, that he was the youngest person in the state of Ohio to retire. So he came here and 22 years ago, started working as a maintenance worker and was quickly promoted to maintenance director. Over the years, Bob's reconstructed and repaved almost every road in his township. All the trail system in the township has his fingerprints on it. Bob, we were paving trails way before other townships in our area started thinking of paving trails. We use a blended approach with, he would pave the roads, take the millings off the roads, and use those for the base of his trails and saved us a lot of money in return. Bob's put his sweat and blood in his job. And I hate to see him retire, but it's time. So I asked the board to approve his resignation.
I'll move to regretfully accept the resignation of Roads, or of Director of Roads, Buildings and Grounds and Parks Director, Robert Matthews, effective June 3, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonett?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carries. I want to thank Bob for his service. I've known Bob since before I was a trustee. Worked with him with our HOA and have always thought very highly of him.
I think we all feel that way.
Yeah.
He will be missed. But as, as Paul said, it's time for him to enjoy full retirement and family.
Yeah. Yeah.
We are going to have, in his honor, talking with Lauren. This was Bob's last project he worked on, was their playground. So we'll have a bench in his name and honor installed back here with a plaque and a big shade tree around it. So if he's in an area, he can sit and watch the kids.
That'll be great.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to propose a resolution for a couple of purchase orders this evening. My first is $12,000 to Cargill. This would move our car, from American Rock Salt to Cargill to cover our percentage that we went into contract with, with the ODOT contract this past year. And then my second would be for the purchase of a skid steer. This would actually take place of the truck purchase that we had originally discussed for the maintenance department this year. We've recently come across some pretty detrimental damage that's been done to the skid steer just from wear and tear and use over the years. So that would be for Southeastern Equipment at $70,817.30 for that new skid steer.
I'll move to approve the following purchase orders. Cargill, $12,000 for Road Salt. Southeastern Equipment Company Incorporated, $70,817.30 for a skid steer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I'm confused on this one. The motion notes 70,000 and change, yet the equipment quote that you have handed us is 90,800 and change.
On the back of that quote, they have our trade-in value for our current skid steer, which they are graciously giving us 22,000 for. Thank you.
And this purchase is off of state bid, so we don't have to go out and seek bidding.
Correct.
Roll call.
Mr. Antonett?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. Paul and Lauren, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Chief McMillan.
Good evening, Board. Hopefully this week, you guys received a packet with some details from Sergeant Mike Sigmund requesting to go back to school at Tiffin University. So tonight, I would respectfully request tuition reimbursement for Sergeant Mike Sigmund for a bachelor's degree of contemporary justice from Tiffin University, per the police's collective bargaining agreement.
I'll move to approve the tuition reimbursement for Sergeant Michael Sigmund for a bachelor's degree of contemporary justice per Article 15 Tuition Reimbursement in the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Union Agreement. Reimbursement will be based on final grades. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonett?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. Quick. All right. I'll turn it over to Chief Ponzi.
So, good evening, Board. First thing on the agenda tonight, I'm pleased to be able to present to you, we recently on Monday morning kicked off an initiative with Ohio Health and then a little bit of Columbus Fire on a mobile stroke treatment unit agreement between our two agencies. Ohio Health came to Columbus Fire Department five years ago in 2019 and wanted to start this initiative of having a mobile vehicle that would be able to respond to incidents, excuse me, and take care of patients that were having a stroke. So they worked closely with Columbus Division of Fire and came up with this concept and began the program in 2019. And it obviously has been running for five years now. So just some quick tidbits about what this brings to us. Basically, in the state of Ohio every year, we have 5,000 people that die from stroke-related brain injuries. Additionally, 800,000 people are affected by stroke each year. Typically, the, the problem with the negative outcome of the patient that's having the stroke is the delay in definitive interventional care being able to be provided to the patient having the stroke. So basically, you have a patient that's having a stroke or having one or two types of strokes. They're either having a clot, which is the most common, or they're having what we call a brain bleed or a hemorrhagic stroke, where they're actually bleeding into the brain. The clot is the most common, which is 85% of the time. So what this truck, this vehicle will bring to us is when we're dispatched, our crews are dispatched on a call that's defined by what the call takers at the 911 center send us out on a stroke, this vehicle will get dispatched to the location, our location, at the same time. And we'll be in phone and radio contact with these personnel. And they're coming out of Columbus, and they may be in various locations, but they are heading to our location. As our crews arrive on the scene and begin to assess the patient, and is it a valid stroke, is it not? Do they feel that they still need the stroke truck or not? Then we make the decision to allow the stroke truck to continue to the location or not. In some cases, depending on where they may be coming from, it may be better for us to go ahead and load the patient, and then we arrange what we call a rendezvous at a point where we can handle over the, hand over the care to the patient before, so they can get them to a comprehensive stroke center. The couple of advantages that this unit brings to the residents of Genoa Township, and please also let me explain that this pilot program was, began on Monday with us and Harlem Township. I don't want to leave them out. We work closely with Chief McKean, Assistant Chief McKean at Harlem and Chief O'Brien Harlem to bring this project to fruition. But as I said, so this truck arrives at our scene or at a rendezvous point, and they have a Columbus Division Fire paramedic. They have what they call an advanced practice provider, which is either a nurse, nurse practitioner, or a physician's assistant, specially trained in neurological emergencies, especially strokes, a CT technician, and like I said, the paramedic. The truck, the unique part about the truck is it has a CT scanner built into the back of the truck. So we can slide the patient into the back of the truck. As the CT scan is being performed, it's being telemedicined to a stroke neurologist at one of the three comprehensive stroke centers in Columbus. That doctor reviews the CT scan as it is happening and then tells the crew, okay, begin this, if it's needed, begin this treatment. So what we're eliminating is the drive time, even when we've been able to call the local hospitals and say, hey, we have a stroke alert. We may arrive at any of the hospitals and their CT machines are busy, and the, and the patient has to wait. Well, we're skipping that process. So whether they come to our scene or we rendezvous with them, they're getting their CT while they're en route. And then if necessary, they're getting the thrombolytics, the clot-busting drugs, to bust, bust up the clot while they're en route. So we're saving probably greater than 50% of the, the golden hour that we need, that we look at for stroke patients is from the first sign of the onset to they get definitive care, which is the drug, is that we, we shoot for an hour. So we're, we're cutting that time nearly in half, which is, which is astronomical for the patient. So just a little data on the vehicle and the crews. Since 2019, they've been dispatched on 9,000 stroke incidents and evaluated over 4,000 patients, and they have treated more than 250 patients with thrombolytics care, which is the clot-busting drug. So it's state-of-the-art. There are some others in the United States, but to the best of my knowledge, it's the only one in the state of Ohio. And we have an opportunity to bring that level of care to our township. And I just wanted to tell you about this amazing opportunity that we had presented to us and we thought was a good program to move forward.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, is there any, is there any cost to us?
No cost.
Wow.
Yeah, that's incredible.
Yeah. Yeah. The, the whole vehicle, I mean, obviously Columbus Division of Fire pays, pays their person. And then the rest of the team is paid for by Ohio Health. And then they're reimbursed by the, the three comprehensive stroke centers in Columbus are Riverside, OSU, and Mount Carmel East. The other two hospitals pay a fee to participate in the program. So if Riverside says they're too busy, they may divert to OSU. Or if they're over on this side of town and the closest comprehensive stroke center is Mount Carmel East, they'll go to Mount Carmel East.
And is this just the one vehicle?
They have two now. They just placed the second one in service. So it, and, and the interesting part is that the vehicle only runs from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They did a lot of data, and the data shows highest percentage of strokes happen during the day. So that's why they run it from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They hope that that'll, this'll turn into a 24-hour vehicle, but the data's going to have to support that in the cost. So, so yeah, we're very excited about this pilot project joint venture with, with Ohio Health and Columbus Division of Fire. So, and I spoke with their team and I said, I, obviously, we don't wish anyone in the township to have a stroke, but it will eventually happen. And I would hope that we'll be able to come back to you at a, a later date and give you a very positive report of an outcome of a patient that we have dealt with. So, thank you. All right, Joe, I'm done. Secondly, on the agenda, in your packet, you should have a, excuse me, a letter from Tony Chris, firefighter, paramedic, Tony Chris, who has recently completed his bachelor's science degree in fires, fire science and emergency management through Purdue University Global. I received his letter on April 25, 2024. I think it was too late to get on the May agenda by the time I received it and was able to act on it. So I would request that you would, and his official transcript has already been turned in to Donna. So I would request that under the Section 15.8 of the collective bargaining agreement, that he would be given his pay raise. He already has an associate's degree, so he's already getting 75 cents per hour additional on his base pay rate. So that the net result is one quarter, 25 cents per hour additional for his completion of his bachelor's degree. And I would ask for a resolution of that approval.
Okay. I'll move to approve the education supplement in the amount of $1 per hour for firefighter, paramedic, Anthony Chris in a bachelor, for a bachelor's degree in fire science and emergency management from Purdue University Global, per the collective bargaining agreement, Article 15.8 of the IAFF Local 4307. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Roll call.
Ms. Johnson-Ats?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Board. Okay, the last item on my agenda this evening. Levy presentation. As you heard Mr. McHale speak to you all tonight, I came to you, I think it was in April, and explained to you our circumstances and asked for the authority to convene a levy committee, which we did. Connie was our, excuse me, our liaison. John McHale was one of the members, and we had four others. Okay. We met three times for two to three hours per meeting, very productive, a lot of different opinions, a lot of good questions asked that we had to go back and find answers for and bring forth the information to the committee members. But at the last meeting, we basically, in the packet that you have in front of you, you see option A and option B. We were down to, we had basically four, four options on the table, and as John said, we were kind of bouncing back between what you see as A and B. And finally, we said, hey, we just keep talking about these two. How about if we take a vote and see where we stand at? So, we took a, like John said, a ballot vote, so there was no pressure of anyone raising their hands, and four of the six members voted for option A. And then when we polled so that we could see, did everyone still agree on the other option that we were talking about? And then that was a six, all six members voted for option B, as you see in front of you. So, I've had the chance to speak with all of you individually regarding the levying. I wanted to know, what, is there more that you'd like to talk about? Do you want on the record an explanation of what the two different levy presentations are, so that it's on the record?
I would say yes. I think that's important for our residents to understand what the two options are, and at high level, why pick this one over that one?
Okay. So, option A, which was the, again, the, it wasn't unanimous, but it was the leading choice of the committee, would it be to propose a new 7.0 continuing levy? And the committee was very strong when they said, we select this option, but we must also be able to stop collecting the current operating levy that we are collecting on right now, that would, that will collect, unless you all make a decision this evening, that will collect through the end of 2025. And that was the caveat, where the package deal of option A was a 7.0 mill, and also, and I don't know if I'm going to use this term correctly, the, to rescind or to stop collecting the current operating levy. So, in other words, we would collect the current operating levy through the end of 2024 by your resolution to the, help me, Paul, the Budget Commission through the county. That levy would no, the current operating levy would no longer be collected, and the new levy would be, begin to be collected on January 1, 2025. So, we had to do, we had to do a lot of waiting and ask a lot of questions from multiple angles of attack, to try to get answers from a couple different agencies that were important, most importantly, the Auditor's Office and the Prosecutor's Office. And finally, this week, we received notice back from the Auditor and the Prosecutor that, yes, we are able to stop collecting if you all pass the resolution tonight, if that's the choice that you make. We are authorized to do that by resolution if the choice is to go with option A. So, we did finally get that cleared up, but it was, boy, it was literally the last minute. It was Monday or Tuesday, I believe, when that final information was finally trickling into us. So, the second option that you find in front of you this evening would be to propose a new continuing 3.8-mill levy on the 2024 ballot that would begin to collect funds in January of 2025. And then, as long as nothing changes in the state legislature with what we're allowed to do with levies, which there's a lot of talk right now, and we don't know how it's going to go, but as it stands right now, it would be a renewal, which would not be an increase, of the current five-year operating levy in November of 2025. So, we would go to the voters this fall and ask for 3.8 mils on a continuous levy, and then we would go in November of 2025 and ask them to renew the current 5.3 levy that has been in place since the fall of 2020, or that was voted upon in the fall of 2020. Basically, financially, both options put us near, I don't want to say identical, but as far as longevity and solvency for the Fire Department, puts us in a very solvent position for anywhere between, again, depending if our budget projections are clear and depending on what inflation does, we hope anywhere could be five to six, maybe even seven years, either one of those options.
If I may add also, what's being proposed are continuous levies, and I think John McHale referenced that. The departments that we have, we want to continue. We want them to be sustainable. And so, this is a new concept for Genoa Township. We've had levies that renew, replace every five years for fire, police, and roads and bridges, and at this point, it was determined that we're best off to say, yes, we want to continue this service, and a continuous levy will do that. We will have funding on an ongoing basis without having to go back and hope every five years. As an aside, I hope that in the future, both police and roads consider continuous levies versus the five-year plan, but that's, that's in the future. For right now, too, the committee was very, very concerned about taxing, double taxing, basically, in 2025 if the proposal is approved in November and the existing levy is not stopped. They were very worried about that overtaxing our residents, because we have heard rumblings about two of the three schools in the township having levies out there, potentially the Westerville Library. We don't know what else might come up, so we want to be very aware of what our residents can bear as far as taxes. And so, this was, was the option that was felt best to sustain the department and not overburden the residents.
And I'd also like to add, as we talk about finances in the department, we haven't gone back to the voter and asked for an increase in funding since 2015, and then we actually experienced a decrease in funding in 2020. So, we nearly made it, well, we're not going to see any new money until 2025. So, 10 years without an increase, with the inflation that we've seen, and especially the inflationary costs that have affected our department, a lot of the internal costs, and then another one is obviously the cost of the apparatus that we, that we need to be able to respond to emergency calls. You know, obviously, as a resident of this township also, I do not take this matter lightly. You know, it affects me as much as it does every other resident in this township, and myself and the Battalion Chiefs and our Office Manager, Lisa Hershey, we have worked diligently on this project beginning last fall, examining all of our figures, and we believe that we bring to you this evening two very solid proposals of what, in what direction you would like to proceed.
I have a couple comments. I know Trustee Goodman was the liaison for this committee. I, I've been continuing my conversations with Chief on just, what are you thinking? Where should we go? I've had a few residents reach out to me and question the amount. I do feel like it's, this is a reasonable ask. My ask to the Chief was, let's not ask for more than we need at this point, because of all of the other levies that you've talked about, inflation, increased reassessments on home taxes anyway, but I think residents expect a certain level of service in Genoa Township. I know you're busy. I live very close to your firehouse, and
You hear it a lot.
I hear it all the time, and my husband will say, what are they doing now? I don't know. Somebody needs something. So, I know it's a need in the township. You're busy.
We are.
So, I don't know that I have a preference with A or B. From my understanding, I know you said they're not identical, but they're very similar. The end result will be similar. I won't say exactly the same, but they're very close. So, it's just, you're going to get to the same finish line. How we get there is a matter of, you know, preference or personal choice.
Well, and to that point, there was concern about going to the voters this November and asking for money, and turning around next November and asking again, trying to explain what was going on. So, that's something that I wanted to bring up.
Well, you know, another thing, just to add a little bit more information, is, you know, the last time that we asked for an increase of funding, back in 2015 slash 16, our annual operating budget was $4.7 million per year. Our operating budget this year is $7.85 million. Costs have gone up. Obviously, you know, it's no secret, we've been discussing this for a number of years now, as I come to you and we talk about various things, but we've, we've stretched the dollar as far as we can stretch it. We've bare-bonesed the budget the last couple of years, not doing things that we really should be doing, and we need to get back on track of funding the Fire Department in a manner that will allow it to run efficiently, and also, one, one thing breaking or going wrong doesn't wreck our budget and not allow us to do other things that need to be done because we suddenly have to take, have to rob Peter to pay Paul to make an emergency repair or fix this or whatever it may be. We've been that slim in our budget the last three years.
You have any comment?
Yeah, so, having sat on the roads and bridges levy committee, I want to thank your committee, because I know there was a lot of time put into analyzing what is the best option for the residents on the roads and bridges levy, and it's all volunteer time.
Yeah.
And I know you had a fabulous leader in your committee that really understood the township and how it functions. And I agree, there isn't a big difference between A and B. Ultimately, the residents are going to pick. I mean, we can, we can decide on what levy we want to put on the ballot, but ultimately, the resident's going to decide. My, I'm a little concerned about the continuous levy in that will, it get adjusted as the property values get adjusted by the county. So, in other words, every time the county reevaluates, does their tax go up?
No.
Okay.
Current assessed.
Perfect.
It would freeze today.
Yeah.
Or what, November, whatever, January.
Yes. That's not the right way to say that. It would be collected as it is passed
Right.
Today, or by the voters.
Value is today.
Correct.
That's good to hear. I do want to say, I mean, they are, they don't have the privilege of seeing these numbers, that there is literally less than $100 difference between the two. Actually, it's less than that. For the per $100, $1,000 evaluation, the difference is only $10.
Yeah.
Is that what I see?
Dollars.
So, ultimately, it's, it's just a matter
Like I said, it's, it's that close.
Right, right. I would just suggest we do one that's the easiest to understand when they're in the ballot box and deciding on which one. Make it simple, understandable. That's my thought.
And I also think that a lot of that will be up to the department, us as trustees. Leslie will be very good about helping us with promotional materials as far as explaining. We can't say vote yea or nay, but we can put it out there as to how this goes.
Educational.
Educational, thank you. And historically, there has been a PAC committee that has worked with residents to get out there and work on the signs and to promote the levy. Whether that will happen, I'm not sure yet. That's not ours to decide. But I do think that we can do things to help inform the residents. I will say that one of the reasons that I hope we can make a decision tonight is because I have the July newsletter. I'm hoping to get some of this information out there. I'm selfishly promoting this, and I've actually gotten permission from Leslie to be a little late on giving it to her so that we could get information out there early and accurate. So, that, that's what we need to do, is to help our residents understand.
And if I may, another point is I think John may have alluded to this when he was up here, is that the committee did have a, a concern of being on the ballot this fall and being on the ballot next fall. So, if, to speak to your point, Mark, of what may be easiest, if it's one vote, then your choice would be option A.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just also would like to remind everyone who either is watching now or here or watches later, of the residents' tax bill in Genoa Township, the Fire Department accounts for 6% of that tax bill. We're a very, very, very small portion of your total tax bill, and we're just asking for the support so that we can continue the operation and the service that we've been providing for the last 23 years as a full-time career agency.
As the liaison to the committee, I will stick my neck out, and I will propose that we go with option A. It would sound the easiest for the voters, and I also think that that was the one that, I know, that was the one that the levy committee has recommended to us after lots of hours of research, both actual meetings and outside.
A couple things. We're not the only Fire Department to come to the ballot before the fire levy has expired.
Early.
Yeah, early.
We are not.
Yeah.
There have been several agencies throughout central Ohio, our closest being Orange Township.
Last year or the year before.
Last June? Okay, so very, very recently. They needed additional funding because they also were in the same predicament. They just weren't going to make it, so they had to put an additional levy on. So, thank you.
And I had a few residents talk about if we go ahead and do option A, which is the higher millage, but then decide not to collect on the current levy next year. Just so the public knows, that motion, resolution, needs to be passed by the trustees before October 1, which is before the November election. So, once we send that notice to the state, we are in agreement that if this levy passes, we will not collect. So, if you don't trust us or think that we're going to follow through, we have to do it before the election day.
Right. So, it's a good faith
Yes.
Showing.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any more discussion? Should I read a resolution? How do I do this motion here, Paul?
So
How do we, how do we tell it's A?
There's two different resolutions, right?
This, well, yeah, there's two different resolutions. The first would be for the levy amount, which is a continuous levy, and the second one would be the actual resolution needed to let the taxpayers, or let the County Budget Commission know that if this levy passes in November, that they will need to recertify the existing mills to tell them that we don't need it. recertify the existing mills to tell them that we don't need it in 2025.
So wouldn't you just need to put the necessity to levy a continuous tax of 7.0 mil in excess of, that defines which one we're going for?
Yeah, we need to say which one.
Because one is 3.8, one is 7.0.
Where are you saying I put the seven between?
Where it'd be a continuous tax of 7.0.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right there.
Thank you.
The second motion does exactly what you're saying, it stops.
And it stops at the 5.3.
Okay, thank you.
You will also have, sorry, you will also have the opportunity as well, when the amounts and rates are presented to you at the December meeting, to make that intention known that you are not going to collect that if this levy passes.
All right. I'll move to approve a resolution of necessity to levy a continuous tax of 7.0 mills in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of fire and EMS. RC 5705.03, 5705.19G, 5705.191, 5705.192, and 5705.25, as presented and approved by the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Do we go ahead and do the next one?
I recommend you pass that. That way, it's showing the taxpayers goodwill that you will not collect the extra amount if this levy passes.
Okay. I'll move to notify the Delaware County Budget Commission to reconsider and revise the certification of the existing fire levy of 5.3 mills expiring December 31st, 2025, if the proposed continuous fire levy of seven mills is approved by the voters at the November 5th, 2024 general election, per section 5705.34 of the Ohio Revised Code. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
If I may, I know trustee Antonetts expressed thanks to the committee. I'd also like to thank the battalion chiefs, Eric Sheber, Brady Johnson, and Corey Weakley. They spent a lot of time working on this. And Corey gets an extra shout-out because he's the data guru.
Yeah.
So, thank you all.
Yes, thank you for saying that.
Joe, I appreciate all the involvement and working together on it. You guys did a lot of work and it made it easy for us to come in and look at it and understand it. So appreciate everything the committee did as well. Helped us a lot.
Yep. All right, next, I'll move it on to Joe Schaefer with the zoning.
Good evening, Board. The only item I have is the continued discussion regarding vacancies on zoning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. I assume we'll want to pursue like we did last month with that conversation in executive session?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I part is short and sweet.
All right. Yep, thank you. All right, and last is Leslie with Communications.
Yeah, I was approached by Hannah Downey, who is the daughter of one of our employees in the fire department, with an interest to intern. She's a senior at Ohio University studying communication. So I think this would be a great help to me. It would really stretch the 20 hours a week that I typically work. So I would ask for the board to approve that. An unpaid internship.
And what is the date? What's the effective date?
We decided on yesterday.
Oh, so the 5th?
June 5th.
Okay. Okay, so I'll move to hire Hannah Downey to the position of an unpaid communications intern, effective June 5th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Any other business before I close out? All right, announcements, June 8th and July 13th, we have movies in McNamara Park. June 10th, zoning commission. June 13th and July 11th, Communication Advisory Committee. June 13th is canceled, so July 11th is the Communications Advisory Committee. June 19th, the offices are closed for Juneteenth. June 25th, Board of Zoning Appeals. July 4th, the offices are closed for Independence Day. July 9th, Fire Advisory Committee. July 10th, Parks Advisory Committee. And the next regular trustee meeting is July 18th. So at this time, I'll move to adjourn to executive session at 7:35 to consider the appointment, employment, promotion, dismissal, or compensation of a public employee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. We're now adjourned at 7:35.
Yeah, I'm ready. I'll move to return from executive session to the regular trustee meeting at 8:26 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goodman.
Yes.
Trustee Antoinette.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries. We have a couple items for business after leaving executive session. I'd like to move to approve Mark Campanello as the alternate to the BZA for the unexpired term.
Beginning immediately.
The beginning immediately and expiring March 31st, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Goodman. Yes. Trustee Antoinette.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries. Also, I would like to move to appoint Stuart James to a regular zoning commission member for the unexpired term, effective immediately and expiring March 31st, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Goodman. Yes. Trustee Antoinette.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries. And lastly, I'd like to move to advance Parks employees Chet Daniels to the third step increase on January 1st, 2024, increasing his hourly rate to $25.72 per hour, effective January 1st, 2024. His fourth and final step increase will be paid to him on his anniversary date of December 30th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Goodman. Yes. Trustee Antoinette.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, there's no more business before the board, so I'll move to adjourn this meeting at 8:28 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goodman. Yes. Trustee Antoinette.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries. We're adjourned at 8:26, sorry, 28.